Good evening and welcome to the January 11th, 2024 Board of Commissioners Working Session. Our first item of business is the motion to approve the minutes from the working session of November 9th, 2023.
It's been moved.
It's been seconded?
Second.
All right, the matter has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are going to move public comment to after the presentations this evening, and with that, we will move right into our first item of unfinished business, and this is to discuss the Single-Use Plastics and Expanded Polystyrene Products Ordinance. And who am I turning this over to, Manager Manfredi?
President Hecker, you had asked that we be prepared to review the ordinance and any questions, and I do not see Ms. Rosen here. The purpose of this evening was for the board to consider the ordinance, the specifics of the ordinance, discuss it, and take any thoughts that you had as far as next steps for consideration of the ordinance. Ms. Gallagher has reviewed the ordinance and is in a position to run through it and let the commissioners know exactly what it means, what's in it, so that you can have a discussion as to the provisions of the ordinance and whether or not you'd want to consider the plastic bag and the polystyrene ban, as it's colloquially all known.
Okay, I mean, we'll do that. My concern with not having somebody from the EAC here is we're not going to get the context on why certain things were included or why they were not.
I think they're relying on what they've already presented.
We didn't...
But we can certainly have other sessions and other information.
Well, I'll see where my colleagues land on this issue, but I think not having that available tonight may hinder the discussion. So I guess with that, I'm going to open it up for comments or questions. Can you speak into the microphone?
I just think it would be appropriate to have some, an individual to speak on it next time, so maybe we just defer this till the next meeting.
We'll see. See how others feel. Commissioner Bowles?
I do think there are, I don't disagree on the outcome of where we should push this. I do think there's some questions that if we got out of the table, we might be able to do some work between now and the next session as well. So I would recommend at least opening it up for questions, or at least taking the temperature where people are.
That's fine. Do you have comments or questions you wish to make since you have the floor? Or do you want to...
Sure, I'll keep it fairly brief. I have a couple of questions myself. I also made a commitment to a resident of Ward 13 who wanted to be here, who couldn't be here, that with her permission, I would paraphrase and summarize some of the feedback that she had, which is not dissimilar from the way I'm thinking, although it's not exactly in line either. Her feedback is, you know, in her opinion, this is unscientific, that needs more science behind it, more research. In her opinion, there are studies, you know, one of the cases that was made was that these are better for the environment to get rid of because of the energy that's used and the cost that's used in producing them. There are a lot of international studies that take a look at single-use plastic bags as among plastic bag options, the cheapest because of the thinness of the plastic and the energy that is used. So if you want to look at plastic production overall, you can make the case that getting use of single-use plastic bags is among the solutions that we could implement, right? But to make the case that they are the most important thing is, in her eyes, not legitimate. And she also brought up the idea about education around single-use plastic bags and whether or not we've maxed out our efforts to educate people about reusing them, saving them, where to recycle them, empower local businesses. So I wanted to make sure we got that on the record because she couldn't be here. The questions that I have are from the presentation before, something that was said, it was interesting, and I'm glad they did a little bit of research, but the comments were made that they did some research by talking with people at Target and Giant, and they were okay with this and they would adapt. I did not hear a lot about going out into the community and asking our small businesses how they would cope with this, and I know we all want to look out for small businesses. I'm glad there's an implementation plan in here, but I really think before this comes up for a vote, there's an implementation plan, but I think we need to go way deep into the community to do a lot of education, to do a lot of listening, and to ask, you know, in Ward 12 and 13 in Glen Side, there are plenty of small businesses that this would impact and the costs that they would bear. So I think the implementation plan needs some honing. I also don't want to just keep up with the Joneses. I think it would be great. I mean, there's evidence widely that these things get into machinery and clog up machinery, but we haven't talked about that here. Is that happening in Abington? Is that a problem in Abington that we need to solve for? There's evidence that they get into the water supplies. I don't know that we've done a study to look at whether or not it's impacting our watersheds specifically here. I just would, I think we need to be, I think we need to try to poke holes in this, to strengthen it. You know, I'm not opposed to it, but I think it needs a lot more work.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bowles. Other commissioners wish to make comments or ask questions? Commissioner Schreiber?
I have some of the same questions that Commissioner Bowles just brought up from his resident and from himself. And since the presentation, I had seen a couple of things on recycling, and I want to know a little bit more about how much we've investigated, like, for example, styrofoam, which I know is really terrible for the environment, and, but apparently, there are different places that are recycling styrofoam, which I never knew. And so I'd like to know more about where that could be in this area recycled, how it could be used. There was some really creative ways. I know single-use plastic bags are recycled, they're made into mats for unhoused people to sleep on, because they're waterproof, that's one idea, but there's other ways that they can be recycled as well. And so I just don't know, and I'm wondering if we can, if any of them are things that would actually bring revenue into the township. So again, I think there's a lot of questions, and I'm not sure there's anybody here that can answer those questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber.
President Hecker?
Commissioner Zepone, yes, I see your hand up.
Thank you. As I discussed at the last meeting on this subject, number one, I do, and I'll continue to say, it's an undue burden on the taxpayers. They talked about the last time, oh, it affects your breathing, your sinuses, your this, your stomach, your that, that's a bunch of malarkey. Okay, so I had a couple of residents that, and this shocked me, that went into Walmart, two $300 orders, there's no bags there. So you either buy their bags at Walmart, or what are you going to do with a $300 order at the counter there? This whole thing, and I'm hearing it more and more, is so ridiculous, okay? These plastic bags have been around for I don't know how many years, and somebody all of a sudden comes up with this brainstorm, oh, they're bad for your breathing, they're bad, that's a bunch of crap, okay? So I'm going to oppose this to the very, very end. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zepone. Commissioner Brown?
I'm kind of in agreement with Commissioner Bowles here. I think we need a very thought-out transition plan. I think it's important to realize that as we learn more about the harmful effects of plastic, we've been down this road before with other things that were commonly used once before, like asbestos, like lead, you know, and we've, because we've learned about the harmful effects of those elements, we've transitioned away as a society from using them. So I think, you know, plastics are, the more we learn about the harmful effects of plastic, we probably want to decrease our use of them, but we want to be smart about how we transition away from them, because as it's been said, want to make sure that we do not burden taxpayers, we do not burden small businesses as we transition away from these elements. So I think having thought-out intentional discussions with members of the EAC, other subject matter experts, economists that might be able to help us to develop a transition plan that's fully thought out, that we are all confident in, I think that's the right step.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Rothman?
I agree with what everyone's saying about exploring things with local business owners and the community. I'm not sure the means by which we do that, but I would say that we need to find a way to do it consistently. You know, for example, me going into a few local businesses in Ward 3 and just reporting back to everyone, you know, hey, these people are cool with it, right? And it's like, no, nothing, whether it's measurable in some way, and I'm not saying that I think we need to create additional work just for the sake of it, but I do think that this is something that will probably move forward at some point in, whether it's now or five or 10 years from now, because I do think that there's a lot of evidence that things can be done better, but figuring out the right way to do it and to lessen the burden on the members of the community and the businesses is really important. And with that said, figuring out if there is some sort of impact on local businesses, but that we want to move forward with it anyway, finding a way that we can make it less of a burden for them is something that we should explore as well, because just because it seems to be something that has great environmental impact and benefits health-wise, you know, we do have a duty to help those businesses stick around, and a lot of those businesses obviously have been through a lot over the past few years, right? So even more additional cost is problematic, so I think we do need to go out there, but I would say that we need to find a measurable way to report back to one another and the EAC, et cetera, as we move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. I see Commissioner Spiegelman's hand, and then I'll go to Vice President Beatty.
Thank you very much, President Hecker. Look, I've been a supporter of this for a long time. I certainly concur with what Commissioners Bowles and Brown were saying about making, you know, basically making sure we make this as, you know, we get out in front of any issues, particularly those that would unduly burden taxpayers and especially small businesses. Jumping off of what Commissioner Rothman said, we are, I think we're fortunate that we are basically surrounded, I think almost every municipality on which Abington borders has enacted a ban like this. I don't think Rockland Borough has, but I think almost everybody else has. So we actually have, we have a lot, we have a lot of case studies that we'll be able to look at, those that have had them for a while, those that, who are just bringing them online now. So I think that will actually save us, that'll save us a lot of time and effort, because I think we're going to learn from the experiences of all of our neighbors in order to be able to fine-tune this and then get it passed and implemented in as reasonably short order as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Vice President Beatty?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't need any convincing that this is a good thing to do. I don't think it's earthmoving, but I think it is a positive for sure, and I have no dispute that we should, you know, that the small businesses in the community can handle the change. But it doesn't make sense to me that businesses can't provide any type of bag to consumers. That does not make any sense to me. And I've referred to the provisions regarding paper bags and the charges for using paper bags. And so what I'd like to learn more from, and we can inquire with the EAC or Solicitor's Office, the definition of a paper bag, how hard is that to comply with, how available are bags that are compliant? And secondly, I would absolutely oppose any charge, mandatory charge on using paper bags in the township. If a business owner wants to impose that charge, they're free to do so, but I don't think that should be coming from us. So I am supportive of moving away from plastic bags, but to, you know, have a penalty for providing any bag whatsoever doesn't, I can't support that. And I am going to have some line edits, but I'm not going to bore everybody with my attorney legalese.
Thank you, Vice President Beatty. Commissioner Reinhold?
Thank you. I should say, I actually attended the EAC meeting last night, and there was some discussion on the plastic bag ordinance. I think it would be helpful for them to come in clearly, they are in support of such an ordinance, but I think it's a matter of, we have questions, they should answer them. My understanding, it's not an end-all, be-all, but it's a help, you know? And they should be able to explain that to us and to the residents, and then we'll, you know, we'll make a decision on what we're going to do.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner Reinhold. So if I'm hearing... Commissioner Carswell?
Hey, so I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm absolutely in support of this. I think that it's great to spend more time looking into the details of it, making sure that it really makes sense, making sure that it fits our community, because we are not the first adopters of this, right? We're kind of late to that game, so we have some good data that we can look at. We can definitely look at, as Commissioner Spiegelman said, the bumps in the road of implementing it, you know, what are some of the lessons learned from our neighbors? My main comment here is to encourage the EAC to keep bringing these to us, because they have been such incredible leaders in improving our environment and encouraging us to be good stewards of our environment. We started the night talking about finances, and this is, stewardship of our environment is just as important to that as thinking about the dollar signs. So I'm excited that this is here in front of us, and I hope that the EAC has the fortitude to keep bringing things to us like this.
Thank you, Commissioner Carswell. Anyone else? So I think what I'm hearing, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would like to continue this conversation, but do it with members of the EAC present, so that we can have the back and forth necessary to get this to a point where we can make a decision about whether to move forward to advertise or not. Anybody dispute that? Okay, so I think what we'll do, Manager Manfredi, is likely bring this back to the February working session, and hopefully that date will work for Ms. McGarry and/or other members of the EAC.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to new business, and the first item is a presentation of the preliminary final major land development plan for LD-23-04-640 Cedar Road, the Hopewell Vet. And I will invite those making the presentation to please come forward and introduce yourselves.
Whoops, should I start again?
You're fine.
I'm here with Dr. Tim Ruckauski and his wife Lisa, who represent Ruckauski LP. They're the property owners of 640 Cedar Road, but they're also operators of the Hopewell Veterinary Clinic. This site's operated as a veterinary hospital for about 50 years, about 20 years of that they own, correct? We've been here...
We're getting some weird feedback. Any idea what the source of that might be?
I think, I think people on Zoom are not going to be able to hear if you go off-mic.
Oh, okay. If you could be closer to the mic without the people participating on Zoom.
So we've appeared before the zoning hearing board over the summer, got several variances, mostly for, due to the fact that it's an existing non-conforming lot, so there's some dimensional relief, minimal setback relief, nothing substantial. We were in front of the planning commission in December, and we got eight waivers, we requested eight waivers, they're again, all very, you know, minor stuff based on the site conditions and typical land development nuances. They're proposing a 1,050-square-foot building addition, which will basically just expand their existing facilities and make their operation more successful and efficient. There are 18 existing parking spaces, where 14 are required. The improvements are going to require a total of 18 parking spaces, and we're proposing 28 spaces. One of the reasons why we're proposing more than what's required is that they've got some employee turnover, shift turnover, so there's, they don't want traffic jams in their parking lot, and they're just trying to make their facilities more, you know, more usable. Project proposes 8,200 square feet of impervious area, which will be managed, the stormwater management will be managed with a system under the parking lot, and it won't have impact on local properties. Also, you know, minor landscaping is going to also be proposed. I was going to go right to the landscape plan, because that explains everything pretty well. Building additions right here in the rear corner. There's existing parking here that's going to just be restriped, rebuilt for ADA compliance. And we have a parking lot that's proposed in the back. Currently, the parking is kind of scattered through this rear corner, so everybody's cleaning up the site. Site's very well vegetated now, so we're going to supplement existing vegetation with proposed vegetation, all of which was discussed with the neighbors. Like I said, we had some zoning relief or landscape requirements, that was all done in coordination with the neighbors. We've got review letters from Panoni, the planning commission, TPND, and the Shade Tree Commission, and they're all will comply. Pretty simple project. I don't think I have anything else. It's, does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
I noted in the Panoni review that they were recommending preliminary final pending resolution of the issues in traffic and parking, and you're saying you're going to comply with everything that's listed there?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, we have Cal Hassan here, maybe he would like to chime in.
Thank you, President Hecker. Just to provide just a little more details on the project, the presentation obviously covered most of it, but I'd like to provide the commissioners and the public a little more details on the project. Again, the presentation before you tonight is for prelim final land development plan application that was submitted to the township. Under this application, the applicant is proposing 1,048 square feet of building expansion that that's going to be in the rear of the existing two-story building. They also propose to remove existing detached frame garage. They are proposing to remove existing landscaping, tie wall, AC ducts, et cetera. They also propose to remove the existing stone wall and walkway adjacent to this two-story frame building, frame garage. They also install new stormwater best management practices, facilities, underground 80-by-20-foot underground infiltration bed, and also install a four-foot-high chain link fence. As the applicant presented before you, as part of this application, there are eight waivers that are being requested. Most of these waivers we're fine with. They pretty much pertain to existing features, utilities, slopes, drainage-related waivers, and also one of the waivers, which is going to be considered by the board of commissioners later, which is the application for prelim and final plan. Typically, an application is submitted to the township as prelim and non-final. The applicant is proposing prelim, final, major land development application. We are fine when the waivers are being requested, and we respectfully request that the board consider these waivers. None of these waivers are anything major, and they are typical with any land development application. With that, I am available to answer any questions the board may have for me.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan. Manager Manfredi, you wish to say something?
Mr. Hassan, if I missed it, there is a waiver request on recreation?
That is correct. The code requires, Section 14611J requires that a recreational facilities plan be provided. The applicant is not proposing any recreational facilities as part of this land development project, and they are requesting a waiver from this requirement. This is something that the, would be in front of the board for your consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rothman?
As the commissioner in the ward where this project, where the would-be project is located, I'm in support of allowing them to proceed. This business has been a good neighbor and respected part of the community for a long time, and while everyone has to go through the processes, albeit tedious as I know they have been for you, the respected members of our township staff have approved it, and I think we should as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Are there questions or comments from board members? Okay, so then this would appear on the agenda for the February board meeting as approving, approving a preliminary final land development plan? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It'll be on the February board meeting agenda.
Thank you.
The final order of business this evening is a presentation of the Galman Group request for a zoning map amendment, and I'll invite them to come forward. Evening, Mr. Jonas.
Good evening, Happy New Year. I'm Mark Jonas, I represent the Galman Group. With me is John McShay from our firm and Jerry Slippikoff from the Galman Group. We're here to talk about a proposed zoning map amendment for part of the Galman Group property for about two and a half acres, shifting a zoning line. This would not entail any changes in the zoning regulations in terms of what uses are permitted. Just a little background, the Galman Group, the pavilion, the bridge, the plaza, and now the flats, is a 33-acre multi-building, multi-use property. The pavilion was built in 1968, the Galman Group acquired in 1996. This is a very old property with some pretty antiquated systems and architecture, a lot of money has gone into it. And part of what the proposal is tonight for a map amendment is to provide some boost for tough times for properties that are multi-use with a lot of commercial space and non-residential space that is not occupied. We've been working on this for a number of months. This is a plan that gives you an idea of some of the things we have in mind in terms of a master plan for this pavilion. It includes gathering spaces, traffic calming, pedestrian connectivity, street skate improvements, and green area as well. This is, again, this is just concept. As this board well knows, this would have to go through land development, which would discuss the details of construction and improvement, including stormwater and landscaping. This is a enlarged view of the southern tip of the property. All the way to the right is Lennox. There's an existing building between Lennox and the site of the proposed medical office building on this approximately two and a half acre property. Two and a half acres actually is the amount of land that would be affected by the change in the map. This is an aerial view that shows the existing office building, right to the, kind of the south of, to the north of Lennox Road, and then beyond that is the proposed medical office building, gives you the context for the plaza, for the pavilion, the new apartment flats, or it really can't be seen because of the label. This is another enlarged view of where the existing zoning line is. You can see that diagonal line that shows where the RC district, that would go to BC, to Business Center. Again, this is a map amendment only, it would not affect any of the permitted uses, any of the dimensional regulations. This is a black and white version, obviously, of the shifting of the zoning line. As part of the planning, we've asked planners to take a look at the context of the proposed medical office building, how it would relate particularly to the residents on Lennox. We have already begun to take a hard look at green areas and landscaping, and these are some concepts that show you the sightlines and to show you the concepts we have for landscaping. We received some preliminary comments, since this is only conceptual from the township, and one of the questions was, what about the loss of green area? We've taken a look at that, and our plan is to add about 48,000 square feet of new green area. That would be a net gain. So even if the zone was shifted and the zoning map was passed... So even if the zone was shifted and the zoning map was passed, there would be a net gain in green area by adding new green areas to the existing site of the Gallman Group property. Transforming a very old property is not an easy task. We think that a medical office building will bring synergy and add some attraction and help with the existing buildings in terms of square footage and occupancy. But in addition to this, signage is always an issue that we take a look at. So we've been looking at signage. The 2017 ordinance does not take into account signage for multi-building, multi-use properties, particularly one of this size. For example, sometimes there's an interior signage that nobody could see, and the ordinance doesn't really take that into account. So we have drafted an ordinance that we sent informally to the township some months ago as part of the transformation. We would like the township to consider this in the future after reviews by the Township Planning Commission and the county. So that is the presentation. This is for a very small realignment of the zone to allow for this medical office building.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jonas. Commissioner Weinberg, I'll leave it off with you, and then we'll open it up for other comments and questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jonas, for the presentation. So essentially, for people that don't know about this area, there's a little piece of the golf course that is owned by the Gallman Group, and the intention is to then take a little piece and then bring it into, I guess, to help with the parking lot for new medical office building. Correct?
Correct.
And my, I guess, I had two concerns. I mean, initially hearing about it, one is how is it going to affect the neighbors on Lennox, and to a lesser extent, those on Meeting House Road. And then the other part, my concern was about green space. The, I have run, so the board knows, I have run this by folks on Lennox that were willing to listen. I don't see any major objections to anything from them. There are two homes, so the board's aware, there are actually two homes immediately adjacent to this that are now off for sale. I don't, what their plan was before, I have no idea, but they are. And the folks on Meeting House seem to be really no major objections to this. I don't know if anybody's here, but I did attempt to meet with them. And as to the green space, I do appreciate what the Gallman Group has at least done, and that is that whatever you're losing in green space, you're making up somewhere else on the pad.
It's not an easy task with a very old project, but we certainly have accomplished that here.
And so I do appreciate that. I have, you know, just in light of the conversations that I have with folks on Lennox, with those on Meeting House, I have, I personally have, I'd like to hear what you have to say, but I have no objection to it moving forward. You couldn't ask the solicitor or Mr. Jonas on the best path forward, but I have no objection to it moving forward. The other thing I should say is that it seems to, in my view, sort of fits the neighborhood, so to speak, in that it's next to another medical office building, it's part of a commercial It's not a convenience store, a 24-hour convenience store. So I guess I should ask, this medical office building, the intention is to be what kind of hours?
We have some major hospitals that we're not prepared yet to be able to commit to that are looking at it. It would be typical medical office building hours. Most likely, this is, you know, conceptual, it would be closed on Sunday, probably limited hours on Saturday, but medical office building only.
Non-emergency, business hours type thing?
Correct. Correct. An office building.
So that's...
Just for those doctor types.
Doctor hours. So, you know, in terms of other uses, seems to be a use that people wouldn't normally object to. So I thank you for the presentation. I'd like to hear what other, my colleagues have to say, but those are my two cents.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for comments or questions. Commissioner Di Placido.
Thanks, Commissioner Hecker. Mr. Jonas, the back, the new zone line in the rear, I saw that it does take out some of the golf course. Isn't there a building back there as well? Because to the left, to the left, that parking lot that swirls over, that's like a tiered parking lot that's raised, but to the right of that is a, isn't there an elder care building right there?
Commissioner, I'm not sure to what you're referring, but the...
The new zone line on the top, the top of your, of the drawing.
Sort of the horizontal line?
Yes, the horizontal line. Closer to the left side of that, near that parking lot that curves, there's a building right there. It's like an elder care building or something like that? Is that being proposed to be, like, demolished, or is it there? I can't, obviously, you can't say it.
I don't think it's there. This, as you can see, the plan was prepared by Boulder Engineering. They did existing conditions plan, and this plan is based on that. So I would, to my knowledge, there is no building there. This is right back here. This is, Mr. Slippikoff.
Maybe you're getting, Sarah Care is back there, but it's not within the area that we're, it's a question here.
It doesn't float in between that line right there?
It's actually part of the existing pavilion building. It's built into what used to be the garage in the back.
Yeah, exactly.
But that's not...
That's not indicated on there?
I'll point over here. It's really up here in the corner where those parking spaces are.
Yeah, when it moves to the side.
As you go around. This would have absolutely no effect on that, and it's not, it doesn't even touch it.
Okay. I need to look at it again.
We're not taking down any buildings.
What holes are being removed from the golf course, if I can ask? Because if it's seven, you can have it.
Do I look like a golfer? I don't know anything about that. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Schreiber.
No, because now I'm confused, and I didn't think I was. So that current building is sort of to the left top corner, the elder daycare thing now. So, and then where is the building that you're proposing on that same?
Well, the only, the only building is being proposed very close to Old York Road. The medical office building.
In that same section, though?
It's all the way down to the bottom of this plan you're looking at, so it's...
Like when you first come in across from where there's the construction going, where the light is? It's right there.
Right there.
Okay.
On the front edge, yeah. Other comments or questions for members of the board? Okay. Mr. Martin, don't apologize.
Yeah, I had mentioned that I was concerned about the folks on Lennox, and a lot of that stuff's going to be decided at the land development stage.
Well, before that, there'll be, if the board is willing to proceed, the board would set a date for a public hearing. That's not a commitment other than to have a public hearing. The public hearing, the solicitor will put public notice in. This ordinance to change, just to shift the zone, would then be reviewed by the Township Planning Commission at a public meeting, be reviewed by the County Planning Commission. So there would be a lot of public input, and that's just part of the zoning process. If the township agrees to move the zoning line, land development then, as the commissioner, as you well know, also involves public meetings with the planning commission, perhaps other boards of the township as well, when the details of that would be discussed.
And then again, I'm just worried about just the opportunity to protect those people on Lennox, because a lot's going to be next to them. So again, there's other, there's opportunity at the land development stage to make sure that whether there's buffers, whether there's plantings, whatever, all that can be taken care of at that point.
Yes, and I'm convinced that we can, by discussion with the township's listener, ensure that those take place. As you can see, Commissioner, there's been already a lot of thought for a concept plan in terms of the green area and the buffering, even the sightlines in terms of the houses on Lennox Road.
Thank you.
And I can just add to that, with a map amendment like this, the neighboring property owners would receive direct notification, and the property would be posted, any hearing that was scheduled with regard to the map amendment. And then to Mr. Jonas's point, if that were approved, this would then go to land development. So again, there would be additional opportunities, but they would get that direct notice with the map amendment.
Solicitor Gallagher, so just to that point, would the next step be moving forward to advertise this and then have, or do we send it to the planning commission first?
So if this...
Or simultaneous, or?
It would be, it is, so do you want me to closer to it? Sorry. I think Mr. Clark is a little louder when he's here. So yes, this would, it would happen simultaneously. If it's approved to move forward, it would, the board would authorize advertising, and it would be sent to both planning commissions. It has to be sent at least 30 days prior to the board's consideration of any ordinance. It would then be advertised, it would be advertised twice in a newspaper of general circulation, the property would be posted, and as I said, the neighbors would have to be notified in advance of that public hearing. So there's several steps of this process and several opportunities for interested individuals to come speak about just this piece of it. And then again, the land development process, again, goes back through the planning commissions and this board.
Commissioner Hecker...
And to be clear...
The vote to setting the date usually is what kicks off the...
The planning commission review?
The transmittal and the reviews at the planning commissions.
Right. It has not been sent to any of those agencies.
Right. But if we...
To be clear...
Yes.
If this were to be moved to an agenda for the ordinance to move forward, the ordinance would then be sent to the county planning commission and the township planning commission.
We would have the benefit of that review prior to voting?
Prior to voting to advertise the final version of the ordinance.
That's what I, I just wanted to make that clear for everyone. That makes sense.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Di Placido, then Commissioner Brown, then Commissioner Henry.
How many floors is the proposed building?
Three floors.
Three?
Three floors.
All right. And the one next to it, is that three, Stu?
I think the one to the south is a two-story.
That's a two-story? Okay.
It seems, on the map that I'm looking at, it seems like there's a pretty robust tree line that butts up against the backs, the back of the homes on Lennox. Was there any preliminary thought of keeping those trees there or tree removal? Kind of adds a natural barrier.
I'm just a liberal arts major, Commissioner, so I can, I can, but I think to the extent that we can save the existing trees on our side of the property line, that would certainly benefit the developer. That's something that would be obviously explored during the land development, what trees are healthy, what trees can stay, and then what have to be replaced or replenished.
Commissioner Brown, we can get the Shade Tree Commission involved as well as part of that review. Commissioner Henry.
I'm just wondering why we are amending ideas like that, are we just seeing variances?
Well, variances and changes map are two very distant concepts, as you know, Commissioner. I served for a couple years as chairman of Montgomery County Planning Commission. As you can tell by my advanced age, I've been doing this for a long time. Variances are somewhat of a clumsy way to accomplish zoning when zoning makes sense. If this makes sense in terms of the context with the building and the Gallman Group property, variances require proof of hardship. It's not a way to accomplish something that makes sense in terms of planning. I think, we think, and I think we've heard some comments here, that this does make sense in terms of the context of the Gallman Group property, in terms of the office building to the south. And so sending an applicant to get a variance is kind of creating an unnecessary burden, and that's why we believe, and we believe that map amendments, text amendments sometimes are the appropriate route to go.
Thank you.
I hope that's helpful.
Other comments or questions? Okay. So following Commissioner Weinberg's lead, it sounds like there is general support for this to move forward for the February agenda item where we would advertise this for March. Is that correct, Manager Manfred?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Excuse me. President Hecker, it'll be on the February agenda. If you agree to send that to the planning commission and the county planning commission, it will be back after review, so it may not be March.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. We will now open it up for public comment on the three presentations that were made this evening.
I have spoken to the Gallman Group, of course, many times, because they do not take care of the Wawa that's in Jenkentown. I photographed mountains of trash there, and I've called Mr. Gallman, and he does answer the phone, and he did clean it, but then it comes back again, and they could power wash that area, but I've been told by one of the commissioners that at least they took care of the area for 10 years. Now, the Gallman Group should be taking care of the Wawa convenience store perpetually, not for 10 years. I might live 20 years. I don't want it to look worse and worse. And then they're going to, according to their word, do this, that, and the other thing. Meanwhile, we have a real problem here with multiple people, including the township letting trash cans overflow, and all the green space is littered with it. Up and Down Valley Road is one of the nicest areas in the fairway. Lots of garbage. I photograph it constantly. There's not enough people here in maintenance to do the job, and they're highly wanted. The most popular people who work here are in maintenance. They're not highly paid, but they're very much appreciated, and they're being cut back on. At first, I was told it was COVID, but this COVID's over. We don't have enough maintenance. And I also have done, I've done extensive research, and I do know that the three things that ruin a city and a suburban area like Abington are no maintenance in shopping areas, particularly convenience stores and fast food. Then we have open dumpsters and trash cans overflowing, and the trash isn't picked up. That is an Abington problem. There's new beautiful Abington trash cans. They overflow. The trash sits there. It's a three-month problem. I've been calling numerous times.
Ms. Kumbell, how does this relate to the agenda item?
I'm talking about it because you put this plastic bag issue on, and I'm going to get to that, but I'd appreciate it if you let me get to it. Okay? Now, the main thing that causes the trash buildup that we see here in Abington is not plastic bags. It is lack of maintenance in shopping complexes, especially convenience stores. It is also open dumpsters and trash cans overflowing into the streets and on the green grass, which is a problem we have even with the administration in Abington, because they don't hire enough people. The Gallman Group has filthy sidewalks and garbage behind the place, and there's green space there, but sometimes it's clean and sometimes it's not. And I've had a call, there's a wonderful bus stop bench there that I wish they had over in another area by the zips, but the trash builds up under it, and nobody takes care of it. This is, we're going downhill fast, and ordinances are ignored and not enforced. Those are the three things that cause blight. Not plastic bags. Now, this is a bag I've carried for years. It's made out of, it's plastic. It's made from a bag. It's an older one when they made them in color. And there are, like I said last time, there's numerous things that you can do, almost no end to it, from clothes to purses. I even made a wreath for the holidays with the red and white candy cane trash bags from the Target complex, and I have other things I want to say because I researched it. First of all, plastic bags are 100% recyclable. Now, it's better to not, they don't use these anymore, but it's better to have no writing and no dye. They can be, they can be recycled if you want them to be. Bag bins do not reduce overall litter and waste. You can look at Philadelphia and see that. The garbage piles up. They don't clean in Philadelphia. No street cleaning, uncared-for parking lots with shopping complexes and fast food restaurants that don't clean up monthly or yearly. Less than 1% of the litter in landfills is these small, one-time-use plastic bags. Reusing bags continually builds up bacteria that can cause e. coli. This dumpster picture actually has one of these PPC, PP bags, they're called, that can be used multiple times, but they take a very long time to eventually degrade in a landfill. And if lots of people have these bags around, many people won't use them the correct number of times, and I do have the amount of times, too. First of all, organic tote bags, which are very popular with wealthier set, need to be used 20,000 times to offset the impact, because they're made organically.
I'm going to ask you to conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
Don't you want to hear this?
I'm going to ask you to conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
A plain cotton bag that's not organic needs to be used 7,100 times. These plastic bags that are PP bags need to use, be used between 10 to 35 times, depending on the thickness. And when they end up in the landfill, that's an issue. And the last thing is, why are you not thinking about encouraging people with a carrot? Why? Why instead penalize them 15 cents a bag? I resent that when I pay $300. How about you save 50 cents?
Please wrap up your comments and take your seat. Thank you.
The least important person in these meetings seem to be the citizens that pay the taxes.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Take your seat. Does anyone else in the room wish to speak?
When will this be cleared? There's a mattress.
Ms. Cabell, take your seat.
Why is there a mattress? Why is this not important to you, but plastic bag bans are?
Please take your seat.
I'd like to pass these pictures around.
No, not now. Please take your seat. We've seen them. We don't need them to be passed around. Take your seat.
Joe Rooney in Ardsley. I'd just like to follow up a little bit on the plastic bag ban, but first, I don't understand, maybe you could explain it to me. They were proposing another ordinance on signs, or they were writing it and turning it into township, the gentleman that was...
Something that they are interested in pursuing. We have not entertained that.
That's not, okay, that hasn't been, that wasn't addressed at all.
That is not addressed at all this evening.
Okay, okay, thank you. So the plastic bag ban, and I wrote you and showed you a picture that was a fraudulent picture that was presented, and I don't understand why people making professional presentations don't keep to the truth. So the whale that we've shown was a fraudulent picture, and I just wanted to bring that out, and I wrote that to you. Plastic bag bans hurt the poorest residents the most, the elderly, and the minorities. That's it. They increase costs of the most basic needs that everybody has, and they also increased inconvenience for people who are spending the most time and making the less, least amount of money. Wealthy lawyers, wealthy hospital administrators, township supervisors, they don't worry about stuff like that, but they're not the people who get hurt the most by this stuff. The second thing is, I tried to understand this, look, I'm a hunter, I'm a fisherman. I spend more time outdoors than I'll get than most anybody that I know, which isn't saying anything because I don't know that many people. But I try and understand this environmentalism stuff. So several commissioners tonight, basically it's a religion with them, or it's at least a cult thing, because they want to talk about the environment, they want to talk about the environment, but when a man comes up and he talks about taking part of a golf course away, they don't talk about that at all. The question's not brought up. When Adele comes and says, "We want to clean up this thing here," somebody else will say, "I'm really concerned about the environment in Abington Township." But that's how we fix the environment in Abington Township. It just takes a Saturday afternoon and a couple, it takes a couple of people in a Saturday afternoon to actually have an impact, if that in fact is what you were interested in, but you're not. This is a scam, okay? People would love to sit on their rear ends and write a rule and say, "Look what I did for the environment." She's doing it. This is how we do it. You all worship big government. You do not have the facts because you could convince Abington Township people because they're smart. You could present the facts and they'd voluntarily stop using plastic bags. Businesses would stop using them. Adele brings real facts. You should bring Mr. Jones in here and talk about what is the impact on plastic bags on our landfill use, on our recycling costs. I've talked to him, okay? You all haven't even brought that up. You would bring a police officer in here, and they would say, "What does an impact of not having bags in a store do for theft, for petty theft, for people in self-checkout, for the Walmart guy who's looking at your stuff? When it's not in bags, there's a higher incidence of theft. That raises the cost in Walmart, that raises the cost on the poorest residents, the elderly, and the minority." That's what a plastic bag ban does. You all would come in and you'd tell me how many whales have been saved because Horsham outlawed plastic bags, but you can't do that because it's ridiculous. None. It has zero impact, okay? There are real ordinances that really could help the environment, okay? I showed you one before. Clean up our township. Make people with businesses that have garbage all around, clean them up. You have the teeth, but that would take enforcement. That would take doing the small things that government's supposed to do. You all don't want to do that. Instead, I got a minute left. You want to sit there and pass some goofy plastic bag ban and then go, "Look, Horsham did it. Look, Lower Moreland did it. Look, somebody else did it. We did it, too." These are just Democrat nonsense. This is a political ploy. You should at least be honest with everybody. It will do nothing to help the environment. It will hurt the elderly, it will help the least, who have the least, the poorest people, it will hurt the minorities the most, okay? That's what it will do, but you all don't care. You don't call Mr. Jones in and say, "Mr. Jones, will this really have an impact on us?" And I know he said this, you don't call the police in. This is where real facts come from, if you were really serious about it, but you're not. You're going to go, "Look, Abington put a plastic bag ordinance in." It does nothing. You all don't enforce the ordinances we have. You pass nonsense ordinances, okay? And then you go, "Oh, look, we've got a political this or that." And then when all is said and done, nobody's helped. There's a reason why you all don't like coming here and you look at your watches all the time, because you're not serious about this. This is how, this is how real work is done, and people like that are people who really help our township. Thank you all.
We'll now move to Zoom.
Karen Milovich.
Hi. I just kind of want to segue into some of the plastic bag bans and the environmental concerns. I believe if you're truly invested in environmental concerns, you'll stop the overdevelopment of our township. We're 98% developed. We are instituting these patchy-looking, ugly apartment complexes everywhere, and we're bringing in renters versus homeowners. And you said in your own, in your own documentation that homeowners bring stability. We care about our lawns, we pick up the trash in our neighborhood, and you're, I don't know what, why we're doing this. And it's destroying not only our township, it's destroying every ounce of green space and every thought of having any kind of an environment here that's really conducive to citizens. The other half of it is, is that, again, we have people throwing trash on the ground. In 2020, when COVID hit, almost everybody, all these businesses withdrew their trash cans, so there is no trash can. So they just throw, the customers just throw everything on the ground, and it just blows everywhere. So, you know, first step, besides banning bags, would you actually have trash cans? Make it, make businesses have trash cans that they empty and that people can throw their trash into, if you're really super concerned. And the bag ban is kind of a ploy. You have to, you end up paying for a bag and getting a bag anyway. So I do think that is going to hurt people. The other half of issues is, you know, all of these overwhelming developments, including those that were presented tonight, when we, when the citizens did not agree with the comprehensive plan, we were told to give our suggestions, that it would be published and discussed, and nothing would happen until we discussed the plans that the citizens wanted. Well, that went under the table, and we're on steroids, just developing any ounce of posted stamp of land that we can. So what happened to that idea? Because we were told that we had a voice, and I guess we obviously don't. And I don't know why all these plans are going forward without us really having any input, because how can you, if you don't even have a comprehensive plan supposedly developed, why is all this stuff going on? Hope of that has been a wonderful neighbor, but I'm curious why they're bumping up and tripling and quadrupling their parking spaces. Is this going to change traffic patterns? Do the neighbors know? Because I do live in the neighborhood, and our neighborhood has taken a really turn for the worse due to overdevelopment. We're basically a cut-through freeway between the Ukrainian center and the gazillion stores across the street. And really, these people in this neighborhood have taken such a hit. So I think the last thing we need is more traffic all hours of the day. So I don't know what this entails. I don't know if the citizens have been notified of this. Again, living in the neighborhood, I certainly wasn't, so it's just a thought. I'm just curious how this changes things for us because we are just overwhelmed, and people are leaving in droves, and this is why. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we have one last resident.
Laura Lehman, Meadowbrook. And so, first of all, I want to say to Commissioner Shriver, I think you know that a very tiny fraction of anything gets recycled. I disagree with some of the previous speakers and believe that this plastic ban is extremely important in the picture of our large environmental disaster that is upon us. Every ounce of seawater that you can take from anywhere in our oceans is filled with plastic, and we seem not to be able to start anywhere to change it. And this is a place, we have many, many necessary needs for plastic, and this is a place where it's not necessary. And we need to learn how to stop using pesticides, how to stop using plastic, how to stop destroying our own environment. So I urge you not to put this on the long run, to watch the people around you having done it and jump in and do it, because there's so much more to do that if you don't start right now, it's not going to get done. Now, there are so many things to address, and it was improper, Mr. Heckler, for you to actually ask us. I'm glad that you made the presentations first before our comments, but our comments didn't come before you made your decisions, and that's not how it's supposed to work. You decided you were going to forward the Gollman idea to the commissioners without hearing our comments, and they didn't even care either. They left the room, and we're not even there to hear any comments that the citizens might have. The citizens have been cut completely out of this, and so we need to change this dynamic. You are absolutely violating every policy and every promise that you made to the people of Abington. So I'm asking you to revert. First of all, nobody knew about what was going on. The documents were not posted. There's an ordinance that nobody saw. The ordinance was not discussed tonight, what was in the ordinance, and the ordinance is apparently going to take recreational land, perhaps just the corner of the golf course, but we don't know that because we don't have it in our hands to review, and that's improper. Mr. Manfredi constantly is unable to appoint somebody to properly post the meetings and properly document the meetings. The documents need to be there at the time, according to our policy. I'm not just making that up. That's our policy that you're supposed to actually be following. And so this review, a committee review of the entire Gollman proposal, including the written text of the ordinance, if you remember, the pre-ordinance was completely different than the presentation that was made. So he made a presentation tonight that may have nothing to do with the ordinance that he wants to present. And so you're going to advertise for the ordinance? You're not going to be advertising for this project yet because the zoning's not in place. And I thought I heard Mr. Jonas say that there was no zoning change, that it was zoned, that maybe he means the parking lot needs no zoning change, but the entire property does need a zoning change. And so the residents have a right to understand those details before you make any decisions. We also have a right to comment before you make decisions. And so this needs to come back to a committee meeting where the residents have the documents in hand before, seven days before the meeting, and that we are able to review that before you make any decisions. The sign ordinance, it obviously can be put in separately, but they should be encouraged because obviously it's going to affect this building project as well. So they should be encouraged to present that as well. And in the total scan of things, oh, I wanted to mention, before I forget, I want to mention that we can't hear what's going on in the room again. Mr. Rooney was speaking. Obviously, Mr. Heckler, your mic was on and you could hear what he was saying, so it was going into your mic and we should have been able to hear. I can show you instance after instance of somebody speaking in the room, and we can hear them on Zoom.
We will look into that for sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can I ask you to conclude your comments? Your time has expired.
Thank you.
With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait, I forgot, yes. We have...
Yeah, before you go and close the meeting, I just wanted to share with my fellow board members and with the residents of Abington that this will be my last formal board meeting. I'm resigning from my post as Ward 10 Commissioner. I am not leaving, I'm not moving into a different ward. I'm staying right where I am at because I love Abington and my kids are thriving here. I actually, last night, looked at a picture from 2018 when I filled the empty seat that Tom Heckler had left in Ward 10, and wow, were they a lot smaller than they are now. And this, I feel like I got a lot more gray hairs, too, but I just want to say, I came into this role with a desire to get more people invested in our community, in local government, and I don't have a good measurement to say if I did that effectively or not, but I'm excited about the connections I've made throughout Ward 10 and throughout Abington, and I'm excited that there are people who are invested in what we do. I'm grateful for the education, the collaboration, and the growth that I've experienced in this role, and I am deeply humbled by all of you and the work that you continue to do. This is a huge job, a massive learning curve, so hang in there. It will get better, but thank you. I really appreciate it, working with all of you.
Commissioner Carswell, thank you, and we'll have plenty of opportunities to acknowledge your service to the community, but it has a, it's been a pleasure. I didn't think I'd get to work with you since you took over for me, but to have that opportunity over the last couple of years has been amazing, and you've developed really strong relationships and friendships with members of the board. I count myself lucky to be among them, and we look forward to your continued service to the community in a new way, but we will have an opportunity to honor your service in the coming weeks.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Heckler?
Yes, Commissioner Zepom.
Can I just say one thing? I just want to get this out, okay, regarding Commissioner Stewart. He has a lot of these issues that go on in his ward, okay? And I know that he always is meeting with his residents, okay? Tonight, he must have mentioned, I don't know how many times, the people on Lennox Avenue. Lennox Avenue, I heard that several times, okay? I'm sure if they were opposing this, I don't have no issues like that, thank God, going on in Ardsley, but I know if they were opposing that, he'd be the first to say it. Well, we got to look into this, we got to look into that. This ain't right, they're not buying that. I mean, we got to give credit where credit's due. The guy's always checking with his residents. I hear it all the time. Every time an issue like this is going on in his ward, he's meeting with his residents. So my God, you know, give credit where credit's due. I'm sorry, I just had to get that off my chest.
No, we appreciate it, and we concur. I mean, I know firsthand how much effort Commissioner Weinberg has put in to communicating with the residents around this, and so concur.
You're awesome, Stu.
You really are. All right, we are adjourned.